According to the clock on the wall, it's nine o'clock, time to go to work, folks. So I'll call this meeting to order. And at this point, we will have the pledge allegiance and a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to everybody for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Let me pray. God, thank you so much for this day and another morning we have of life, another morning that you've put life into our souls so that we can live for you. And so I pray for all that happens here this morning, pray for all the decisions that are made, all the things that are done. We want them to be for the good of our community. We want them to show love for our neighbors. We want them to ultimately honor you. And so we need your help, we need your wisdom, and we're asking that right in this moment. So would you help us? And thank you for the season of the year, for this Advent season, Christmas season. We are so thankful that you've come to give us peace and to give us help. And so we look to you and seek to honor you through all that happens today, be with all the commissioners, all the people presenting, all the decisions that are made. We want this to honor you, and we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Appreciate that. I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting today, both those that are physically here and those that are here through technology. And the first order of business we have is a certificate of retirement award for Leslie Roder, who's been our financial person for quite a few years here in Reno County. And I would start off by reading the plaque that she'll be receiving today. We want to thank you for your 11 years of service to Reno County and its citizens, your work with our departments and auditors, as well as your tireless dedication has helped keep Reno County in a strong financial position. We wish you a well-deserved and happy retirement filled with good health, joy, and fun endeavors. You will be greatly missed. Is there anything you'd like to add there, Randy?
Sure. So Leslie's been with us for 11 years, started as an accounting specialist and then became the financial specialist. Her role evolved, and she has been extremely important to many departments here at Reno County, including electeds, the Treasurers' Department, Clerk's Department, helps in everything financial, all the financial decisions. I mean, Leslie has a part in them, has made sure that we have clean audits every year. She has done a wonderful job and will be greatly missed. So Leslie, we appreciate all that you have done, and obviously, we may still call you every once in a while, who knows, but we do appreciate everything that you've done. We appreciate your work for Reno County.
And with that, I'd say it's time to either give Leslie a chance to speak, or we'll give you the award first.
Thank you all so much. The wording that you read out from that certificate just really gets to me. I can hardly believe it's been 11 years. It seemed to go by fast. Sometimes it feels like I put 20 years in in the 11 years, but Reno County's a complex organization, and I enjoyed the challenge, and I'm relieved to hear officially that you all think I was up to the challenge. So I've really tried to do the best I could for the benefit of the county and the citizens, and I don't have really any direct interaction with the citizens, but I'm always thinking financially about, you know, what's the best accounting solution? And we've got a great relationship with our auditors, and they know everybody here, Randy, and Cindy, and Shonda, the others that'll be carrying on. So I really don't think you all are gonna skip a beat. Seems to have gone by real fast. In 2014, I had to come up here and introduce myself to the commission after the job was created. So I've got great memories, the friends I've made here, and I do feel a sense of accomplishment, and I hope I don't blow it in my last two weeks.
If you would step forward, please.
Hello, thank you. Thanks so much.
Whatever you want, it's your thing.
Now just smile.
Very nice. Thank you.
I remember boards where the audits didn't come back, so.
Well, that's been my obsession.
It's a pleasure to serve where things are going on.
I think everybody ought to know that Leslie's put in a lot of extra hours, a lot of extra hours, and it's great to have had her part of the Reno County team. Thanks. And with that, moving on. Is there any public comment on items not on the agenda that anybody wants to address today? Seeing none, I think we'll move on to item five on our agenda, which is to determine additions or revisions to the agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to bring up?
Commissioners, probably add the Kansas Association of Counties Voting Delegate Form for next week's conference. Can add that to the end of the agenda.
So that'll be on the business item then, or in the consent agenda?
If you want to put it business so we can explain it, it was a 7D, the last item.
Okay, we'll just figure on doing it there. We've had all the details in writing on the items on the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion here in the open meeting that anybody wants to bring up or questions they want to ask on any of these items? Seeing none, I'd say a motion is in order to accept the consent agenda.
I'll move to accept the consent agenda as presented by staff.
We have a motion and a second before we vote. Is there anything further? Does anybody have a comment? Okay, then. Abigail, please help us out here.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes. Motion passes. So we're down to our business items. And can we go back to the agenda here? Business item number one is, usually I have an agenda in my packet, I don't have one today. Thank you, sir. Well, thank you, guys.
You all good?
Phil, I guess you're up.
Yeah. So I'm Phil Ochsler, I'm pastor of Trustee Bible Church, but I serve on the Reno County City of Hutchinson Opioid Settlements Advisory Oversight Committee. Wow, what a mouthful. So this is a class action lawsuit settlement that emerged after the opioid epidemic kind of sprang up. Those companies that, I think, all the back history is like, these aren't gonna cause any trouble, nobody's gonna be addicted to these, kind of like smoking in the 80s. And then they realized they messed up, so they've awarded money to the state, the state passes on money to the county, state passes on money to cities. And so our committee exists to kind of do the legwork to distribute these funds in accordance with what the Kansas statutes are. So we're trying to distribute those in ways that, I mean, the only ways these monies could be spent is in accordance with Kansas statute. And yeah, the other thing that is probably worth noting, because I've presented before, is this is not taxpayer money. This is not money that we can somehow get back in the hands of taxpayers somehow. I know that would all be our heart, that we just, man, let's take these, what's our balance here? I think it's, yeah, a couple hundred thousand dollars. Our thought would be, yeah, let's just give that back to the people. Well, it's meant to go to people who have been impacted by opioids. And so in that spirit, we've created these guidelines, and we sent out a request for proposals. We got seven. We determined that two of those met all the requirements of the state statute, and the city approved one of those. So that's in your packet, the calling all parents, talk that they need you. The city approved that last night. And so we're here asking for $55,000 of the 292-130-58. So this is on this agenda page on the backside. Those are the details. We supported Reno Connections the last time we had a grant cycle. What they do is create that warm handoff where they take people who are coming for assistance and kind of get them all that they need to get up and moving in life again. So you can imagine someone who's been shackled by these addictions, in some cases, they don't have a birth certificate, they don't have like basics that they need to live. Reno Connections kind of is that warm handoff to get them back into life. And I think real woodenly, we would love for them to be productive citizens, taxpayers, contributing to the good of our community. So that's the aim of these monies. Am I getting that right? So Patrick's on the committee with me and Candace and Carla. So I think that's the spirit of it. So you can see in what they asked for, they asked for 200-some-odd thousand, and some of it is duplication of services, some of it is some other things that didn't quite fit with the statute. But we believe the primary work that they're doing with this warm handoff does fit with the spirit of what the statute says. And so that's what we're asking you for, 55,000. So what kind of questions do you have based on that little speech? Success rate? Yeah. Do you know that off the top of your head?
I can send you what they sent from two years ago, and we'll come back and let you, sorry. I'll switch up here. So I'm Candace Davidson, I'm with the Health Department, I'm the Health Education Promotion Supervisor. We, like Phil said, we approved them last year as well, and so we'll have a recap of how they spent the money, and I'll come do that in January and let you guys know how that all, how that got spent and stuff. They service quite a few people, I want to say it's in the hundreds, every year. And so they, and really working on getting people back into society with all of the things that they need so that they can get housing, they can get a job, they can get a car, they can become taxpayers, so they can fill our tax base as well, right? So did that answer your question?
Yeah, kind of. But we don't have them figures yet?
No, because, yeah, we will have them at the end of December.
End of December, okay.
And commissioners, Reno Connections stays busy all the time. I know they have people at the library.
Yes.
They are busy all the time. It's amazing how many people you don't think about that don't know where to go. And it's something very unique for Reno County. Other cities, counties do not have this service, and I would say it's probably a model. We may not have the data at this time, but knowing the people that work at Reno Connections and seeing how much work they do, I'm sure the numbers are gonna show that we serve a very large number of clients and help them.
And we are only paying for a portion of what they, like, this is a small portion of what they are already, like, of what they're doing. And these monies go directly towards people that have opioid use disorder. It goes directly towards people that have opioid use disorder, not just any of their clients, because they do service a wide variety of people that come in and ask for help, whether it be at the library, Hutch Clinic, they're actually out at daycares now as well. So really helping all of society.
Any further questions or comments? Naturally. What's the overreach in the county as far as the smaller communities out there? Like, just name any of the smaller cities. Is there opportunities, or what is offered for someone outside of Hutchinson?
Right. I don't know, again, I don't know that we have specific numbers, but I think what we're finding is that people are understanding they can actually get the help they need by connecting with Reno Connections. So.
I can also tell you, I am from Bueller, and I'm actually on the Bueller City Council as well. And so I have gotten people connected through Reno Connections in Bueller. So I know that they do, at the very least, come out to Bueller.
Yeah, but that's a good, that's a good metric for us to hold out to them, because I think that's what they desire to be, is helping all the county to make progress on this. Yeah. Thanks for always championing that, Ron.
Well, I mean, I think in the past, our smaller communities have been left out of a lot of things. And I'm in agreement with Ron, we got the taxpayers and citizens of the whole county. Of course, we're not directly funding this, this came from this other project. But as I've said before, you have only so many taxpayers. Whether that tax money came from the federal government or wherever it come from, it came from the same people. You have the same people earning and contributing, you have groups of people taking. So yes, we are not levying our citizens from this board for this, but they have paid for it, and they should expect results.
This money's actually paid for by the pharmaceutical companies, as I, Patrick, it's not even tax dollars.
Yeah, like Phil said, it's silver money. We send out an RFP, so we're kind of limited to fund who shows up, right? We could possibly look at, this is dangerous, because whenever I have an idea, the fly, I have to remember to follow through. But we could look at maybe adding an RFP, hey, we would like to see how you work countywide. I mean, that would be something else. Because we do ask them, a lot of the things that people request this money for are things like this organization that's doing things, but they could do a little bit extra with some extra funding that comes from this. And so we want that information to see how it goes. But we could also say, hey, could you tell us how this affects people, not just in Hutchinson, but the rest of the county? We might look at that.
I take it that there's 200-some thousand, and this is dwindling, or is this?
No, we can't spend it until you guys are unleashed.
Well, yes, but my question is, is something on a yearly basis being added, or is this a finite program that's being paid?
There's a whole schedule of what's anticipated to be received over the next 10 years, because it's very, there's over a dozen different fund settlements coming through at different times. We don't spend anything until we have it, obviously, and then we don't spend everything we have right when we have it. So we're trying to kind of spread it over maybe 10-ish years.
Sounds good.
What fund is this? Where's the money coming out of?
It's coming from some of the pharmaceutical companies that actually made it. The Sackler family, if you Google it, had a lot of pharmaceutical companies. So it's the companies that actually made opioids, and the government sued them and said, hey, you misrepresented how these work. And it's a few retailers that also sold them. So there's a whole bunch of different companies that are paying into a settlement fund, and then it gets distributed to the state. But it's from those companies. It's similar to in the 90s or 80s, there was the Tobacco Settlement Fund, which a lot of people still remember. That money from the, this is just a weird footnote, but the tobacco settlement money all went to childcare. So there's something in Topeka called the Children's Cabinet, childcare cabinet that pays for childcare, but it's from tobacco settlement money from the 90s. And what they decided to do this time was instead of take it from opioid companies and use something a little bit unrelated like childcare, they said this should go to try and reduce people with addiction.
And where else can this money be used at, or people using that, or where's this going somewhere else?
Yeah, no, there's a limit to like six categories, and they're all related to drug use prevention. So you can't take this money and buy a fire truck, you know. And the State Attorney General actually requires me to send them a report every year or twice a year saying what we did with it, because if we did the wrong thing with it, we would be in trouble with them. So.
Does like the Health Department or any of these outside, do these get some of that money?
They only get it if we give it to them. We have to pass it through. So I think one year, the district attorney, the district attorney had a program that they applied for, but they didn't apply for this round.
They didn't apply for this year?
They didn't apply for this round, no.
And we're vetting some, some fun, kind of off-the-wall stuff too, for you. So you don't, I mean, we're bringing you the kind of the best of what we received that meets in accordance with the statute. I mean, we had some that requested, and they're like an organization in another state wanting to get our money to do some good work here in Hutchinson or the county, and we're just like, oh, that's okay. We would like local people to be doing the local work here to support what we're doing. So, I mean, I think that's kind of the work that we're doing in vetting all this. And it's dicey, because it's requests that we're putting out there and kind of what people need to come up with. But to your guys' point, like, I would love to see some of these RFPs come from out in the county and see what we could do to, you know, stretch our legs and run with this.
That's up to them to put in a.
Somebody's gotta come up with something creative to pull this off, yeah, that fits with the statute. I mean, that's the other thing constraining us. We got those six categories, and if it doesn't fit those, we just cannot do it.
Yeah, yeah. You gotta do it legally.
Who else is getting money out of this for this round?
I think the committee's only requesting one fund, one from this round.
The city, the city of Hutchinson gets money as well from this settlement, and the city of Hutchinson approved Rise Up Reno. They are a youth organization that is devoted to substance use prevention in our community. They're in a lot of high schools, and they do stuff in the county. And so we've given them, out of Hutchinson's allotment, the city of Hutchinson's allotment, we gave them $14,300 to develop a program that's a prevention campaign to help parents kind of walk through and navigate this with peers. So we're asking, though, from you all for the 55,000 related to the United Way and Reno Connections.
I think this is a great program. And just a little background on this, for those who don't know, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but several, a few years ago, we joined a class action suit for this. We were approached by a couple attorneys and joined in the class action suit with all the government entities that wanted to join in, could join in. And that's how this came about, and the state has handed down the money, they keep some, and we're down at the bottom of it. We get whatever they decide to give us. So I suppose it's got some state statutes on percentages, but I think we agreed in that contract for a certain amount of percentage of the funds that would come to the local entities to fight addiction. So.
And this isn't gonna affect our budget in any way, shape, or form?
No, this is a separate fund, Municipalities Fights Addictions Fund, that it's not tied to the general fund or any property tax funds, so it doesn't affect our budget.
Well, it's just a pass-through. Well, that's what I'm getting at. The questions really needed to be asked in an open session, you answered them. That way the people know where the money's coming from and not us taxing them.
That has been a point of confusion in the past, that, you know, we're using tax money to do this? Why? We're not. We're using.
It's a court settlement.
Yes, right.
And I see no reason why we shouldn't be, why we should be grilling you further. This needs to be passed to get the money here in Reno County.
I'm just a volunteer, I'm here to help you.
For the use of Reno County citizens who need it. And it's not costing the taxpayers, so.
I'm gonna make that motion.
There you go. That's what I was getting at.
That we approve the request and move this forward.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
We've got a motion. All right, motion in a second. Any further questions or comments before we vote?
It sounds like a really good organization to, you know, for this money. I would, I would, it's pretty vague on where the money's spent and what's getting done with it. I personally would, I think it's a very, very good idea, and I like the idea it's not costing taxpayers money. Great. But it's still money, and I'd like to see how it's spent.
There's about eight pages in the back of your packet that, do you have this?
No, I do not.
Yeah. So if you go down to the bottom, there's, you get the exact answers of the RFP, of exactly what their budget is, exactly what we said no to, exactly what they're gonna be doing, exactly how it connects to the statute. So we're not trying to be vague. It's mostly me just being the volunteer and not being up to speed on all the language of what's specific, but it is there in your packet. And so, you know, right there, she's got it on the screen. So if you want to take some time and examine that, or that would help. But we're trying to be transparent with everything we're saying.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, even if I do say no, I'm pretty sure I'm outvoted anyway, but I mean, sorry.
No, that's good. And I think, I mean, you raised a valid point, like, and with this, because of how we're sending out the money, they have to send us a report back. sending out the money, they have to send us a report back, which we'll communicate back to you all. So you'll know exactly, these questions you're asking about the outcomes, we know those answers in the stuff that they give us back, because in giving them the money, it demands that they return us some information to let us know how that money's being spent.
That'll be here by the end of the year?
We'll get it at the end of December and early in the year, we'll be able to give you some information, yeah.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Abigail.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirst?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your report. Item. Item B, Department of Aging, funded agreements with First Call for Help, Hutch Meals on Wheels, Hutch Community College Volunteer Center, RSVP, Interfaith Housing and Community Services. And we have Candace here with Department of Aging, who, whose department takes care of these funds to report and give us some in-depth information. So Candace, if you will.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Candace Bonison, Director of the Department of Aging and Public Transportation. Here to present to you today agreements that we have for the 2026 fiscal year. Since 1975, Department of Aging has been partnering with community outreach for places and agencies that provide services to persons that are 60 and older. Funding is allocated in our budget for that and was approved in the last session for the September approval of budget for 2026. This is included in our contractual line that we work with these communities to be able to, these agencies to be able to bring community services to persons 60 years of age that we don't do as any type of direct service. And here, I'm here today to ask for approval on these agreements to provide them for their funding, which is a little portion of their budget for the fiscal year 2026.
If I understand correct, we've already approved the amount. It's just the direction it's going.
That is correct.
Any further questions for Candace or for discussion?
And this is pretty, this is pretty much a yearly.
Annually, we support the community agencies that do these services. Like we don't do any minor home repairs, install grab bars, assist persons with showers, Interfaith and Community Services, they do those types of things. They're bonded to do those. They have the technicians to be able to perform those. The Meals on Wheels, we don't do any kitchen service or provide any onsite services through the Department of Aging. So we allocate money to the Meals on Wheels to provide that for persons that are in, homebound is what they identify them as. And then for like First Call for Help, they assist persons that are needing additional care items, personal items like Depends, some different kinds of items, once in a while, a little bit of money here and there, depending on what their need is.
Okay, so these are outside entities that you're.
We are funding, correct.
And so when they come and ask for money, we could say we're already giving them money?
That is correct, through our services, yes, for persons that are serving specifically, persons 60 and older.
60 and older.
And then they do report those on a monthly and quarterly basis. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Well, we have Candace here. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion. I would move to approve the 2026 agency funding agreements as presented by staff. Do we have a second somewhere? I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion before we vote? I would just like to make a comment with one you haven't talked about yet, and that's the Volunteer Center.
Yes.
And if you've read any reports from that HCC Volunteer Center and know how many thousands of hours individuals have spent, whether it's reading to kids or whatever, just, just a statement so people know about that Volunteer Center.
And currently with Medicare Part D, we have volunteers onsite assisting us with those Medicare enrollment changes.
That's busy.
It is busy.
And if you get it there, you know it's somebody legit, not some oddball phone number and then they segue into that. That's been disgusting the last month for me. I'm the right age and there's always somebody calling, there's a highest 40 calls a day. And I feel responsible to at least answer or find out that that's what it is before I ignore it, because we do have citizens that want to get ahold of us.
Must be very lucrative. They work pretty hard at it, don't they?
Yeah, they won't let you alone. And you can cancel that number and they call you on a different one. But anyway, Candace, sorry to get off in the weeds there. It's time for a vote. Help us out, Abigail.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirst?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Just one last thing. I'd like to welcome everybody to our facility today as we are performing the holiday luncheon for employees. So we hope that you all do join us today at our facility to see where we're at, see, look and explore our new vehicles and then come enjoy the camaraderie that we'll be hopefully enjoying for the day.
And that starts at 11? That's what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be there. And to go along with that, since you brought it up, why, I just want to thank all the staff and employees who helped serve and prepare and clean up and do all of that, because that's much appreciated. Anytime you throw some kind of party, there's a lot of work involved, as Ron's pointing out. So, thank you. I'd say we're down to 7C with our insurance coverage. And we have Mr. Fee here to help us out with this.
Good morning, Commissioners.
If you would.
I'm Bob Fee with Fee Insurance Group, 2920 North Plum here in Hutchinson. And we're going to review the county's insurance. And I know Commissioner Vincent, you haven't been through this before. The others have had to tolerate me at doing this before, but they get to do it again this year. So we very much appreciate the work that we were able to do with the county and do not take it for granted at all. It's a pleasure to work with Randy and Patrick and Shonda and the crew. And so we thank you very much for that. Thought I would do a few things, and I guess I've got this, right? I don't know what to push, though. Oh, the team we have here in Hutchinson that works with, directly with the county, include myself, Laura O'Neill, Janelle Vieira, who handles claims, and we don't want to keep her busy, but we have kept her busy here recently. And Belinda Fellows, who handles, she's our controller and handles all the billings and so forth. What I thought I would walk you through is a little bit of what's going on in the insurance marketplace, just generally, an overview. I provided an executive summary specific to Reno County, then I thought we could go through premium summaries by line of business and then an overview of the total premium summary. And at any time, please, if you have questions, stop me and we can walk through any questions that you have. So, before I get there, so the insurance marketplace, and some of you have heard me talking about this for the last several years, unfortunately, has been a very hard market. We are beginning to see light at the end of the tunnel. The latest CIAB, which is a summary that is done every quarter, it's a nationwide summary, shows that we're seeing softening in the property marketplace. Not, not, no rate increases, but softening, which means the rate increases are coming less and less. General liability and liability lines in general have edged upward a little bit due to litigation primarily. The automobile line has edged up sharply nationwide, mostly due to inflation and the cost of vehicles today. The cost of fender benders is no longer a $500 pound out the fender, it's new electronics and so forth. So the costs to repair have gone up and this driven those lines up a little bit, well, more than a little bit. Automobile has gone up. And then some of the other lines that we're seeing softening, cyber is soft, workers' compensation has been very soft recently and remains so. So it's all actually very reflective in the county's renewal, as we'll see when we go through it. Kind of executive summary, so what we're talking about on this renewal is your property, your liabilities, which include general liability, law enforcement liability, public entity liability, employment practices liability, automobile, including automobile liability, and umbrella liability. And then we've got cyber and crime coverage as well. So property has increased. I'm going to go through some of your recent losses a little bit. It has increased, but I will say for the first time, when I pushed back on the increase that we originally got, they softened a little bit. So we are, we are seeing some work from our underwriters when we push back. They do increase your values by about 5%. We will be adding, I know, a, oh, the Range facility coming up when that's completed. So that will, that will go on to the schedule. So those changes happen throughout the year. Your inland marine and equipment was basically flat. Your liability is where we saw the increases. Back up, I don't mean to point the pink finger at Patrick, but since he's an attorney, I will. One of the things that's driving liability, the liability lines, is third-party funded litigation. And it's a fairly new phenomenon in this country, but, but there are actually firms that put together funds of money and invest in large lawsuits or in law firms that do large lawsuits. So the numbers of advertisements that you see, I mean, it's astounding to me, the number of ads that we see for everything, but a lot of it is funded through third parties and their hope is to get a portion of that as they're, they've made an investment and they want a return on their investment and that return comes in the form of a lawsuit that is won. Most of those are large, large lawsuits, not the smaller ones. But it has driven up and we've seen just recently in the last year, we've seen lawsuits that used to be a million to 2 million having demands of, in excess of $10 million. So the demands have really gone up. So far in Kansas, the, the amount of payments going out has not dramatically risen, but it is causing costs to rise in defending those claims. So I got off base, but those are the liability lines and we are, we are seeing that across the board. Your automobile, and when we get into the loss summaries, you'll see that we've had some spikes in auto losses here at Reno County. We did provide a deductible option to offset some of those increased costs for you to consider. And then the cyber liability actually is coming down. The industry has, has done a nice job at providing proper behind-the-scenes work in stopping cyber attacks from becoming bigger than they could be. And they have also done a really nice job at mitigating the loss when it does occur. They, it's incredible, but the insurance companies know who the good actors are and they know who the bad actors are. And if it's a good actor, sometimes if it's a loss that they can get controlled pretty quickly at minimal cost, they do. Unfortunately, they're paying criminals, but, but it is what's going on in the, in the world right now. Your umbrella liability follows the general liability and your auto liability, so it's, it is up. But if we, if you change your deductible in the auto, that may, that may change the umbrella premium. We would adjust it at that point in time. So overall Reno County, the package has a 12% increase over last year. That is, is not the full story because we also had increases in coverage, so the limits went up as well. The rate did not go up 12%, but the overall premium did. And our Fee Insurance Group continues to remain at a 5% commission is, and that's built into the premium that you will see. So the next thing on here is just a three-year look back at your premium and loss detail. And insurance companies typically look three to five to seven years back to figure out how, what the trend lines look like and they break it down by your line of business. And I just, I highlighted a few things. So if you look at the far left, that's your three-year combined. And you can see the, the loss ratio is a 51%, which is good. The trend is good. We have had a really actually strong trend line. If you look across, last year was a 13%, the prior year was 51%. In 2023, it was a 93%. So they look at anything over about 65% is break even. 65%, we'd call it break even because they have their expense loads built in as well. But overall, the trend line for Reno County has been very good, which, which will help us in the future. A few of the highlights that I, that I made were the auto line. You can see it's, it's a little bit hot at 89% this year. It's been running a little bit hot and we did increase deductibles a few years ago. That's why we have another option in there. The other line and this.
I just want to ask a question.
Sure, absolutely.
The way I understand it, we have about 195 vehicles.
Over 200, over 200.
So that's about one in five vehicles is involved in some kind of claim. Would that be better?
No, no, these are, these would be the dollars spent.
Okay.
So if you have a major accident on a vehicle, that's a high-dollar vehicle, that could offset, you know, that, the whole thing.
That's something I think we need to look at and I would ask that if you've got any recommendations on how we could, courses or whatever we could do to please get ahold of Randy?
Okay. Will do. The general liability line you can see is at 138%. And I, I should have gotten into the weeds on that, but I think we've had some lawsuits.
Yeah.
Either of you recall what?
I don't remember 2023, why that one's so hot.
Yeah. I think it was at the jail.
Yeah, I mean.
I think, I think it was at the jail.
The only issues we've had are at the jail and they were, those are defense costs is what we had, not, not someone successfully suing us. But unfortunately, we do occasionally have to have people at the jail that we are, that have a claim that we have to hire, use our attorney coverage for.
Correct. We, we get an awful lot of, of claims brought that come in that are probably nothing's going to be paid and we don't actually file a claim. We file it for information only so that it's on record with the insurance company so that they know, hey, this could pop up and it's on their radar. It doesn't affect this number at all, only when there are actual expenses paid out. So. And then property, if you look back, 2023 was, was not a great year, but going backwards, we had a, Mr. Vincent, we had a earthquake claim on this building back in 2020, I believe, 2020. And so those construction costs went into a couple of other years and, and that's had an effect on the property rates for a number of years. So just kind of going through the property, you can see we blanket all of your buildings and contents and that blanket amount and we're showing. and contents, and, and that blanket amount, and we're showing the 2025 year on the left, and then the 2026, 27 year on the, on the right. That blanket limit went from 83 million up to around 87 and a half million dollars. Because of the nature of this courthouse, the historical nature, and the construction, et cetera, we, we have that one separate. So, that's the next line, and that's contents and building at 22 million dollars. So, when, when we blanket things, that means it's all buildings. We have them all broken out on a schedule, but, we, we put them all together and just to, to come up with that total blanket limit, if that makes sense. Other change that we made last year is down a few lines, that convenience center, business personal property, we put three compacters that are at the waste management center onto the property schedule, because we've had some accidents with the compacters, and they're very high dollar, and travelers wanted a little higher deductible than we had on the inland marine schedule, so that, that was a change we made last year. Everything else remains the same on the property. I'll stop, pause, and see if anybody has any property questions. Moving on to the inland marine, the inland marine is your movable equipment, so that's, that's all of your equipment. We, once again, have schedules on, and Shonda does a great job and her team of, of tracking all of the equipment that is at all of your locations, and so we, every year, get with her and, and go through those schedules. Like I said, it's, it really is, there was a small increase in, in coverage and a small increase in, in premium, so that, not a lot of change. The liability lines is where we're seeing the largest increases, and the, the general liability line went up by almost $8,000 in premium. That is kind of reflective, not just of, of Reno County, but reflective of what we're seeing throughout the country in the, in the insurance marketplace. The law enforcement legal went up, it had the highest, I think, percentage increase, and that's a lot related to the jail. So, anything that happens at the jail can become a problem, and things happen at the jail. I know we had a, we had a death, you know, those, anytime you have a death, it's, it rises to the top of the list of things to look into, and, and is there going to be a lawsuit? Whether there is or not, it, it always is on travelers' track record, and, and they, they read the Hutch Tribune, I think, I don't know, but I get emails from them every now and then. The public entity, public entity management liability is, is actually pretty, pretty, relatively flat. That covers you all, all the elected officials, and then, public entity employment practices covers against any employment-related loss that you might have, wrongful terminations, sexual discrimination, any, anything like that. And so, those lines have gone up a little bit, and they, they're tracking the liability lines. So, here's our auto, here's the biggest increase that we had, and, Ron, you can see we have, I think, 193 autos and 29 trailers, and so we've got a total of 200 vehicles with 21 larger vehicles that, where we have a higher deductible on those. So, that premium increase of $33,000 is as-is. The next page is, we said, well, what if, what if you guys take on more risk? And I know each department has their own, you know, budget and vehicles and so forth. And, Ron, to your point, one thing in risk mitigation that you can do is, is take a higher deductible, and if those departments know they have a higher deductible, it's coming out of their pocket first, the training is a much easier thing to, to work on, because it, those are real dollars when they're coming out of their department. So, we just said, quoted, across the board, $10,000 deductible, you get a roughly a $35,000 savings over what the renewal would have been without that deductible change. So, something to consider. Any questions on that?
$10,000 deductible per-
Comp and collision.
If you wreck a sheriff's car-
If you wreck a sheriff's car, the first 10, 10 grands on us.
Yes, yes, sir. And I don't know how you cost account that. Does that cost account against the sheriff's department, or does that-
So, any vehicle damage comes out of the department's budget. So, yes, if, that would be the general fund, the sheriff, so you could see, it wouldn't take much to make up that 30-some thousand dollars, so-
Yeah.
I wouldn't recommend doing that, higher deductible, but it would cost out of the department budget.
I see your point, yeah.
And, and they're going to come to us.
Yeah. One hailstorm would, would just, to wreck on that.
On your vehicles.
Yeah.
Yes.
Driving around with dents in them, I guess.
Do, do you, some, some insurance companies have a, one deductible per, like, storm event, but, I take it that this is each individual vehicle?
This is each, per vehicle, yes. Because you have, you have a lot of vehicles are garaged, I mean, it depends on when the storm hits, right?
Yeah. So, yeah, but, so, it's 10,000 per vehicle, and I, as many vehicles as we got, and as much is going to happen, I can't, for that kind of savings.
Yeah. We were, we were examining ways, and, and we've been working with travelers on coming up with, with ways to combine various coverages in, into a common deductible, maybe a very, very large deductible, in order to gain savings, almost like a captive program of some sort. They have them, but they really are, those deductibles that we looked at are, are way more than we would want to see. I mean, you, you, you would be a catastrophic, catastrophic event before a vehicle was covered. But, we're continually kind of looking at ways that we can mitigate risk while still being able to provide the coverage that, that you would expect. So, and, public entities are, are difficult. We were working with them on both this program and then the cities program, and, because you're both very similar in a lot of ways.
Well, I mean, and you need to bring it up for consideration. I mean, you've got to check it out, it may work and it may not. In this case, it doesn't look, to me, like it, it's workable.
Right.
So, I mean, but, but, you know, in doing your due diligence, you, you need to at least look, and I appreciate that.
So, we'll get rid of that auto option, right?
Yeah. We could just take a couple of things and we're done.
Yeah.
Yeah, as many vehicles as many places it-
And we, the way we trade vehicles between departments, we put a lot of, get a little more age on them, and more miles on them, also.
And, and to your original point, I, I do think training and, and, and making sure the individuals driving those vehicles understand, they're not free, and any, anything they do to them can cause some issues. And sometimes, I, I know we just had a recent one on a unmarked dirt road, two vehicles, one of them was ours, and it was pulling a trailer, and the trailer had a mower on it, and, and so we had auto damage, and we had trailer damage, and we had mower damage. And, and so we had the deductible for the auto, that doesn't include the, the trailer and the, and the mower, and that, those had a separate deductible, because they were on a, on a different policy, but, things like that do end up costing money. The next page is the umbrella, and like I said, it really just follows the, the general liability and the auto liability, so there's a slight increase in that million-dollar umbrella policy. Commissioner Pogner, did you have a question?
I've got a bigger umbrella policy on the little bit of stuff I do, and I'm peanuts compared to Reno County. Is this enough?
So, Reno County is, because you're a public entity, I mean, you're subject to the Kansas tort liability laws, which limit you to half a million. So, the real reason for higher limits on both the auto and having an umbrella would have to do more with any federal litigation that may come as a result. For example, the Americans with Disabilities Act. If, if you get brought into suit for something regarding that, the Kansas tort reform act does not apply. So, I, I don't think you need excessively high rate, or high limits on, on that line. I, I do think you have pretty good protections, and, I mean, Patrick, I, I would, I would throw that to you as well.
Well, from my, where I sit, I'll always take more liability coverage, because you can't really be wrong, if you have a higher one. But, well, I agree with Rob, I mean, I mean, you know, we have the tort, we have some protections on statute, it hasn't been a problem.
Yeah. I, it just struck me, but, mine's personal business, and this is government, and you, there are, I guess, my brother was there yesterday, he, he did this kind of work for years. I could ask him about the liability, and I've heard him say a lot of times with government, just what you stated.
Yeah.
It's, it's a different scenario than your personal. So, I should have remembered what he told me instead of asking you, but, still, it's a thought that hits, and it should be discussed.
Well, typically, I agree you can't have too much, but I do think the protections that we have in the state of Kansas, which I, I'm glad we have, protect the public against frivolous lawsuits for excessive amounts.
Yeah.
Is, is this, this is a million-dollar umbrella, right?
Yes.
I mean, I've got a million-dollar umbrella myself, it's, it's nowhere near that high.
Right.
Is it because of the amount of vehicles, buildings, and everything that we have compared to what I have?
Yes. Yes, the umbrella rates generally follow the, the general liability, what, what your exposures are on that general liability, and then certainly your auto is your largest liability exposure.
Yeah.
So, it, it follows that as well.
The more autos you have, the-
If you have 200 vehicles personally, I want to insure you. And I want your umbrella.
You got too busy the way it is.
Yeah, no, actually, you know, for, having 200 vehicles and an extra million, $20,000 is really fairly reasonable.
So, there's a possibility that it could be 200 million-dollar umbrella cases, you know, at the worst.
Well, they're going to have trouble getting it out of Reno County, because you'd have a $2 million as be your maximum insured exposure. So, I think, I think you're good with that. The cyber and crime, and, and obviously, we talked cyber, if you have questions, let me know, but we have a million dollars basic coverage on cyber, and that's, so we've got first party, and that would be an, an actual attack against the county, that's one thing, ransomware attacks, malicious things that get into your system, and then there's third party, which is a liability, so that's, I'm a citizen who has my data that's in the county website, and the website was hacked, and now my personal data has been taken, perhaps, I can sue you. In order to not have those suits, there are that third party that, that would come in and, and immediately pick up monitoring of all individuals who had their personal data taken, or potentially taken, and if there is suits, then there, then there, there's coverage on that for the, so those are the, those are the two parts. Crime, and this is actually built in, because we used to have a separate crime policy, and we still can, but they began blending the two, because so often, you will, we're seeing a lot more cyber crime. So, you know, somebody gets an email from somebody else, and it looks like it's a legitimate email, and it says, hey, wire transfer, $100,000, we just bought this new ambulance, and it gets wired, and bang, it's gone, the money's gone, and it was, what, what was it, cyber? Or was it crime? It's really kind, kind of a combination of both. So, we blend those two types of coverage together, and, and hopefully are protected against that type of thing. And I'll, I'll say this, and I know you do training, but, you can't train enough on employees who are working on their computers, because the, the number of phishing incidents right now has skyrocketed, and that phishing is an email that obviously looks legitimate, and you just need to click here, you know, I, we get them from Everji, and it's not, if you look at the, at who it's actually from, it's not Everji, and they wouldn't send out an email for me to click and, and log into my account. That isn't what most companies do, but that's how, how these, these bad actors are getting into systems, and they can be into systems for a long period of time, or anybody ever notices it. So, anyway, that's, I'm on my soapbox for cyber, but, train, train, train. Premium summary is, is right here, we, I don't have that auto option included in the final number there at the bottom, so you can, you don't have to worry about that line. This is all through Travelers, A++ rated carrier, Travelers has been working with Reno County for, I think, about 15 years now, and we're very pleased with them. They're one of the few companies in the marketplace that works with public entities, and I think I've mentioned before, there's some pools, there's the K, K Camp Pool, there's the Midwest, Midwest Public Entity Pool, and Travelers, and EMC, and EMC, you're a little bit too big for, for them. They quoted it one year, but it was full of holes. So, this is the option that we have for you, and I would welcome any questions, and just say thank you.
So, Bob, from what I just saw, we're up $98,000?
12%. Yes, sir.
From last year? But, knowing some people in the industry, you are correct, there's very few companies out there that write counties, cities, these types of entities. So, you're kind of limited as to who and where you can go. I, I know that from personal experience.
Well, the hope is that the market continues to soften, and that, that next year, we come in flat, or, or better, we'll-
Yeah. You can always hope. So, has anybody got any further questions for Bob?
Do we have, I mean, nothing against Bob, and, I mean, he's got limited resources, which any other agency would have the same. Do, Bob's fee, I believe, is 5%? Do, 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 do we ever, do, do we shop agencies?
We could look at that in the future. 5% is pretty low, I think, I think the range goes up to 15%.
Yeah.
Just when I've looked at it.
Yeah.
We could, there are other, there might be other brokers or insurance agencies in the, in Reno County that could also bid out and work with Travelers. We would have to, my understanding is, we would have to do that first, choose an agent, and then, they would work with Travelers. I think once you're in with Travelers, an agency, you don't kind of, another agency can't bid Travelers against another agency in turn.
In with Travelers.
Now, we could look at, as Bob mentioned, K Camp, or Midwest Public Risk, or Public Entities, whatever it's called, those are pools, we could look at that, but actual agents, there are others in Reno County that might be interested, but, it's 5%, so it'd basically be looking at that.
The only way we would save if, say, if one agent wanted to do it for 3%.
Well, I will tell you, I'll just speak to that, Ron, I brought this up a year ago, Bob knows that, that I, I wanted to see about that, and I, that's when we discovered that one agent has that, that, that's, only a couple of companies bid this kind of liabilities and stuff, and so, they would have to relinquish that to another company, or we'd just have to choose them, as Mr. Partington said, so, but their option was to charge us more than Mr. Fee was, because I talked to them personally.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he's, he's in line with the percentages for sure. He's trying to help us out.
So his fee is, is?
Yeah, it really is.
We, we have to, we have to get paid something, kind of, and they can't work for free. But I guess we could, but that, that's no fun.
Yeah.
It's public service.
Not to defend one way or the other, I just want to say what I just.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody wants to do it for less than, less than what we're doing it for. I, I mean, I, I told Randy last year, have at it, I'll help them, I'll get them what they need. But we have to, we have to.
It sounds fair to me, but I don't really miss.
Right.
It's a good time for me to just say Jubilee and I talk to Rob's team a lot and they do a good, we get really good customer service from them. Not to say that a different agency wouldn't also give us good customer service, but I mean, we call them and email them all the time and they're really responsive, so I appreciate that.
That's, that's worth, that's worth something because. I find out that, you know, that, you know, I save a little money on my insurers, but I can't get a hold of nobody.
Yeah, and you really, you're right. Because when you have a claim or an issue, you really don't want to wait three days to fight, to get a response. So that is a big deal to me, yes.
Especially on some of the size of claims that could happen here.
I think in my experience here that fee insurance has really bent over backwards to be, represent us with their underwriters. They, especially on the one 2020 event.
Thank you.
Well, he's did a very good job of explaining everything to us, you know, what, what we can save and, and what it'll cost us if we, if we lose.
So does any, you have anything further, Bob?
I do not, thank you very much.
Do any of you guys have any further questions? So I'd say our next step is what? To, to get a motion to accept? Or are we at that point?
I think we don't have a contract here, but I think we would maybe have a motion to authorize either chair or county administrator to sign an agreement with fee insurance for the 2026 policy. Or?
And we, we can send that out today. I mean, I can send you something today, Randy.
Yeah, so if you guys just approve it based on the premium summary without the $10,000 deductible on auto and authorize.
And then you guys will get the right paperwork and get it signed?
Our motion that we accepted has written.
You want to authorize Randy to sign that?
Randy to sign it.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further questions, discussion before we vote? Seeing none. Abigail, would you help us?
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent? Commissioner Hirst?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. We added item seven D. That's voting delegates here to the Kansas Association of Counties meeting and legislative forum or?
Right, so there'll be a form to fill out. The county commission, there's going to be multiple people at the Kansas Association of Counties Conference next week, which is Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. I believe Commissioner Bogner, Commissioner Parks will be there. Jenna from the, the county clerk will be there.
I will not be there.
You will not be, okay. I'll be there in and out and we'll have other staff members. Carla will be there, I think Michael Plank. But what's needed is to, I guess, nominate probably a commissioner to be the primary voting delegate and then have a first alternate and a second alternate. So if you would want to make a motion nominating the three people in those areas and then approve it and then I can fill that out and send it to KAC today.
Well, first of all, so we know what we're doing, I think Ron and I are attending, right? And I would just as soon suggest that maybe Ron would be our delegate.
Well, that's good because he picked me last year and I was going to say that.
Yeah.
And I will be there, so I will be an alternate and possibly who else?
There you go.
Authority, isn't he?
Yes.
And I'll, I'll take the third down the line if they don't, if they don't work out.
Which I'm pretty sure I won't be called upon.
Is that a motion?
No, I'm not.
Well, you've got to be present and got to have, have RSVP'd. So who would be the others in the?
Another one that was, it would be there, I would recommend another elected official, so.
As a second alternative, I'll say Michael Plank.
Yeah, yeah, he'd be there.
He'd be good, yes.
Is he elected?
No, he's not, he's appointed, yeah, that's, he'll be there though. That's, it's good to have someone that we know will actually be at that session.
Okay, good enough then. So whatever, that's your thoughts, that's fine. Do we need a motion or is it just an agreement?
No, if you would just, if someone could just make that a motion, what you guys just said, to have, I believe, Commissioner Hirst, then Commissioner Bogner, then Michael Plank as your, as your delegation?
Anybody willing to make the motion? If nobody else will, I will.
Go ahead, if you remember all the names, go ahead.
I'll do this. Ron is, is, is the voting delegate alternate, Don Bogner. And we're going to have Michael Plank be the second alternate. So that would be my motion to appoint these individuals.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Nothing much more to say unless you guys have something. If not, I'll call for a vote.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirst?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes. As long as Ron shows up, I don't have to. Motion passes.
Well, you get a vote ahead this time. You don't have to hold your yellow sheet up like you used to.
Yeah, that's right. You can. So next thing on our agenda is county administrator reports.
Okay. Just a reminder that on December 15th is the Quad County meeting in Newton. And I think Commissioner Bogner, Commissioner Hirst, you are going, you two are going. Any of the other commissioners going to be attending that?
What's the date, 15?
December 15th. I think 11:45 to 1 and it's at the Newton.
Medical Center.
Medical Center, yes. So if anyone else is going, let me know, probably within the next, by Monday or sometime this week would be great.
We're getting pretty short on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then a reminder that next week is KAC, but the Monday before is the Kansas Natural Resource Coalition Annual Policy Meeting. That's Monday, December 8th, 5:30 PM at the Hyatt in Wichita. Commissioner Bogner, I think you've signed up, but if anyone else is going, you might look at that invitation. You all received that last, last month, I think you got that.
I think their final date was. I called Thanksgiving.
Of November, so it's kind of, but.
But they are pretty easy to work with. Yeah, because I called them at Thanksgiving. And I got an answer.
They'd be glad to have you if anyone else wanted to go, I'm sure. Yeah. And then just a reminder that Saturday, this Saturday, four to six PM, Turon Fire Station is having their decoupling, I think is what they call it, but basically like an open house for their fire station.
And that's Saturday?
Saturday, four to six PM in Turon.
I saw it come over.
Commissioners, I have something I would just like to enter into our minutes that was at this meeting. Real quick, you'll remember last week we passed an MOU with, and now South Hutchinson and Hutchinson also signed the same MOU, which is great. This week, we received a petition from the City of Hou, South Hutch regarding an annexation. The statute says that when we receive that petition, we're supposed to set it for hearing. However, the MOU says that we don't have to set that hearing. So I did email the city administrator and city attorney for South Hutchinson just to confirm that we are not going to set that for hearing. And they, of course, agreed because we're all in agreement. But what will happen is if some years from now, people are questioning what all went on with this, I want the minutes to just state that we did receive the petition. I emailed them and they said, no, because of the MOU, we're not going to set it for hearing and we're not going to have a hearing on annexation, so.
Which, which amounted to a withdrawal when they, withdrawal of their original petition?
Yes, it just makes me a little nervous because we did, you know, I, I just want to make sure that we all, I just want to put in the minutes that that's what happened and that's why we didn't set it for hearing. That's all I wanted to do today. Thank you.
Yes, good idea. Anything further from you guys that we need to be aware of?
Let's start with Richard, he ain't here.
Yeah, Richard doesn't have much to say today, so Ron's next in line. We'll start with Ron on commissioner comments.
I would just ask the commission and administration, since it was brought up to us regarding the herbicide, insecticide sales that we, the state statute says that we have to sell them for 25% under our cost. I would just like to know if this commission and administration would like to add some statement with regards to KAC's policies to recommend that they change that statute to say that we sell at cost rather than a discounted. Would you, would, if they'd be interested, maybe I'll put something on you to put together a resolution.
I know from experience, state parks, federal parks, they use this program. So they've shifted their obligation to the counties. And that's, that's an old farmer's thought.
Well, yeah, it, it is an unfunded mandate from the state. If we go and I would happily work on something. They, because the state says we have to discount our rate, but the state doesn't supply us with any funds to do so. They just put that burden on the taxpayer, so.
I think that's fair.
We could present that at, at the legislative.
I don't think any other county's thought about it, so.
Yeah, they have. Especially all of your rural counties that have a lot, you know, they think about it quite a bit because it is just, it just has, that money comes from somewhere, it comes from the taxpayer, we have to discount.
Nobody's presenting it.
Yeah, it's been a while. It's, it's a good thing to make.
One thing, just sitting here thinking and just from my own personal knowledge, do they let non-voting delegates, delegates go to that meeting, like if I'm an alternate?
Yeah, I believe, I believe everyone can attend and a lot of people do, but, but then they just.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Comments could be held.
If I'm, if I'm going to be there, I, from my own knowledge, I'd probably join you. If, if you aren't going to throw me out. So, good thought, Ron, anything else on your side?
We don't have, necessarily have to have a vote or anything on that, do we? No, just, nothing else.
Well, I think we're all pretty much in agreement. We ought to try to get that straightened up. It's probably going to be asked that gets ignored, but if you don't ask, you don't know.
That's right.
Randy, you, you want to continue?
I really don't have anything today.
All right, Ron?
Now, what's going on?
Like I said, I, I kind of said quite a bit last week. Haven't had a lot of action in the last week from people. So I'm pretty good with signing off the way we are. And that'll conclude our commission reports and comments. If there isn't anything further by anybody, I'll say this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.